This conference will now be recorded.
Third time's the charm. Work session, August 8th, the City of Port Orford Common Council, August 8th, 2024 at 5:30. So I'll do a quick roll call. Counselor Burns?
Yes.
Counselor Bogwitz?
I'm here.
Counselor Belisus?
Here.
Counselor Tidy is not present.
He's online.
Counselor Tidy. Sorry, Greg, I didn't look. I can't see that far. And then Counselor Rask? And Counselor Webb should be here very soon, but as of now, Counselor Rask and Webb are not present. So just to start out this meeting, to remind everybody here, this is a work session. We're not going to make any decisions. The reason for this meeting, that I tried to call it after we spoke last time, because we're on beyond the conditional use permit, we're talking about the agreement. This is when we should pump our brakes. We do have this boilerplate agreement in front of us, but there's so many facets to us. And now there's been funds introduced. So I just, we want to be conscientious of it, but we also don't want to hold anybody up. But our first obligation is to the city, so we want to do our due diligence. Okay, so on the agenda, for the findings, it's mostly to put down in front of you. It's pages of documents, we'll touch on it, but I think this workshop is more intended for talking about this agreement and some of the questions we have moving forward, and not the conditional use status. That's a longer conversation that I'm sure is going to be discussed longer in the future for different facets. So that'll be item A. We'll blow through that pretty quick. I just wanted to make sure you guys had that in front of you. And then B, it reads as affluent master agreement, and really, it's a discussion on the draft master agreement. There's so much, you know, legal review and questions we have, that that was a little deceiving on that. So we will work on that. And then item C, the state funds, that's another long discussion. But as we've been told, it's important that we perform well on that. And that's one of the main objectives of this meeting as well, is to get informed on that. And to, you know, Anne is going to fill us in a little bit on it, and just so we know. Because we're here to answer to our constituents, and I don't feel like people... You know, we had a gentleman come in here and tell us that everyone was impartial last meeting, and I can't tolerate that. And so we'll do everything we can to keep this transparent and let the citizens know that that's what we're here for. So with that, is there any questions on the findings? Or, oh, and that's another thing, is we got a glut of answers today. Like yesterday and today, we had our answers from the engineer and from the attorney, Mr. Cluse. And I mean, do you guys feel like you've had a chance to assimilate those answers?
No.
We know that we need to get this information out by Thursday, so... And then last night, was it last night or the night before that we found out that Mr. Speakman from Dyer was going to be here?
That was yesterday, that he would be here to answer questions.
And I didn't want to slosh that, but I mean, we have to be careful, because it's still interacting with someone. And if we can't do public comment, then that's kind of, you know, dicey for me. But at least he's here to hear the conversation and know directly the questions. And I'm just saying, we need to tiptoe around that with our interactions, because we want to be fair. Okay, so that starts with the findings. Is there any questions on that? And these are the findings from Mr. Cluse. And these are going to be gone over at the meeting as well, right?
My understanding, right, my understanding is that this is what Mr. Cluse has put forward as the proponent of this, of what he would put for the findings. But I believe that our attorney also, Lori Cooper, could look over, and it would be up to the council to decide what their actual findings are on that. So this was Mr. Cluse's explanation of it, of what he came up with. But I believe that if you have something that you feel should be different, then our lawyer could write that for you of your actual findings.
I personally think that the findings should be shortened up, and perhaps our attorney should work on those. I mean, these are very, very detailed, but I don't know for the CUP extension, they need to be this detailed. That's just my opinion.
I would agree. I'd like to see something simpler. I think there's things that are embedded in here that I don't know if they become agreements, like finding number nine, which basically says that we are going to be, you know, moving forward with this pipeline. And I think because we have these agreements and things to work out, I wouldn't want to create some legal document that creates an obligation that we haven't fully agreed, that we're still discussing.
Okay. And yeah, this is where, you know, remind that we can't direct staff or do anything. So we are going to be in the lurch for the meeting, but...
Well, I think our attorney's present today.
She is.
Yeah.
So obviously, we'll be able to glean information, and people will be aware of some things that might be on the horizon, which is, it's good.
So this is a point of question for me, since I'm new, but because she is your representation, not mine, your representation, can she, if you have questions for her, can she answer those?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's what I wanted to be sure, when you said that staff couldn't interact. I was like, wait, maybe, that's our lawyer.
And that's why it should be fine to speak with Mr. Speakman as well, just to get the information. I'm just saying, we have to tiptoe around it. And I don't even know why, other than I want it to be fair.
Right.
Okay, so is there any questions on those findings? That's kind of a continuing thing. Go ahead.
Well, can we just ask, Lori, I'm sorry, it's kind of weird, because you're behind me on the screen, but can we ask, would it be possible for you to work on simpler findings for us?
Definitely. And I just would like to know, when is the date of your meeting? Do you want to adopt findings for this?
It wouldn't be, well, it would have to be two months from now, unless we have another meeting, because we can't direct you to do anything with this meeting. So that would be the next regular meeting that we would be able to direct anything, which would put us into November.
No, it wouldn't be September if we directed her at the meeting.
Oh, we haven't, yeah, we have a meeting next week.
In August.
Okay, yeah, so it would be September.
Yeah.
Unless we had some other meeting, for some reason, we could clip it on there. But we're just having a conversation right now, you know. We didn't do any direction to Lori last meeting about findings, did we? Obviously not.
No, I think that would have been ideal, but I don't think we got to it at the end of the meeting.
Right.
But you made a decision, you did make a decision, didn't you? But was it not final? I don't remember. I'm sorry, I haven't looked at the stuff. Did you make a decision, or were you going to still deliberate at your next meeting?
That's what we were trying... Oh, you mean as what we're talking about right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we can't do anything until the regular meeting. We can't even, yeah, we can't direct staff, we can't direct you.
Oh, right, I know that. But I meant at the meeting, with the CUP appeal that night, you gave some direction to bring findings back, correct?
That's what I thought. And that's what I, I didn't know if like, that was enough to let you start working on that, you know, or enough direction to where we're not stepping out of bounds here.
Well, I think it is. You know, what I can do is submit findings, and if they can be added to the next agenda, the next regular meeting agenda, and you can adopt them if they're, if you think they're, you know, they're what you want. Otherwise, it can wait. But usually, it's the next meeting.
If your legal opinion that we're okay doing that, then I think that's fine. I just can't ask for a consensus or anything like that, other than it seems like it would be okay if your legal opinion is that that's okay.
Yeah.
I believe on that last CUP extension, that said, we would direct staff to work on the findings.
That's what I thought, but I just wasn't 100%.
I think we're okay, because I have talked to her about looking at this, because I believe that was the directive, so. And I think one outstanding question was the matter of coming up with just a very clear date as to when, what the date is, that is the expiration date, so that we don't get into a confusing situation.
I think both parties would agree that we need to come up with the extension date, and whatever it may be, so.
Joseph, could you put for the record that Counselor Webb is present now? And Brett, we kind of streamlined the agenda a little bit. We touched on the findings, but there's so much to it. We're just wrapping that up right now, but it was just kind of put it in front of you for the next meeting. Kind of finited that this is a discussion about a draft agreement. And then for item C, we're not going to really dig into that three-quarter million funding, but we're going to touch on it, because that's almost another meeting in itself.
I think that there's potential for more of that type of funding to come, given everything we know. And maybe we ought to come up with a plan that looks at that type of funding in general.
And that's what we'll talk about on item C. But I'm just saying, we're not going to dig too much into... We have a lot of meat on the phone.
Rather than that specific.
And one of the reasons that I narrowed this down is me and Tim and Melissa started meeting. We just decided to start meeting a week and a half or so before the regular meeting, to, just to streamline things and make sure we're keeping, you know, as business as possible during the meetings. And we kind of came up with questions that are really important, that really take precedent over a lot of the smaller questions and the minutia, because they're the, I don't want to say stopping points, but it's like, until we have these four or five answered, then we could sit here for months and months and not get anywhere. And I think everybody's motivated to get an answer, one way or another. So we touched on item A. Is there any more questions on the findings? Or Anne, did I cut you off when Brett came in? Greg, do you have anything on the findings? Okay.
Sorry, sorry, I thought I unmuted. No, I was going through it earlier in the meeting, but there's a lot to unpack.
Gotcha. No, I'm just trying to remember to include you, because they turned the screen away from me now. No, he needs to see it more than you.
Can we ask something about a finding now? I mean...
We could, but these are from Mr., is it Cluse or Klaus? Cluse? Close?
Close.
Close. Close.
Okay. They're from Mr. Cluse, so it might be hard.
I'm just wondering, on number three, it says that extended one year at time without limitation to the number of extensions. And I don't know that that... I'm...
Our ordinance doesn't have a maximum.
Yeah. But I think that the planning may be working on that.
It's not relevant, though, to this.
Okay.
Yeah, and this is basically a history from, you know, June 16, 2017. But that is our current ordinance, is that we can extend, yes. But yeah, you're right, that planning is working on extensions, I believe.
Tightening that whole thing up.
And I know it's impossible to not consider the whole project, but really, our decision is on what's going on inside of the city limits, you know? And it's a secondary outfall, like that's what we're talking about, regardless of where it's going. Like, in my mind, we need to establish that it's really an outfall by definition, and that, you know, and that we're only dealing with that discussion. Who did I interrupt that guy?
Have you guys touched on performance bond?
Not yet. No, we really, other than the findings... And did that answer your question, Gary? Like, under this agreement, which was made in 2017, that we've identified a problem maybe, but it's just another one of, all we can do is do better in the future.
Gotcha. So basically, our decision is just to shorten these up and then to look at them.
We haven't made any decisions, but our conversation was about that, yeah, for sure. And I think that Lori, once she establishes that we did give her that direction, that we will gain and be able to have that on the agenda, so we can talk about it a little more at this regular... When is the regular meeting?
Next Thursday, one week from today, the 15th.
Okay, so we're going to move on to item B. And this is the big one. This is the agreement. This is the draft agreement that we've had in front of us. Like I said, me and Anne and Tim and Melissa talked about yesterday. And I think we came up with a couple of questions that other people had, but... And I think maybe that'd be a good starting point, Anne, is to get those questions in Aaron's hands and Troy's, excuse me, Jim's hands. And, because that's really the big ones. I mean, those are the big ones that we got to get on the table, and then we'll go into the details of it a little bit, but...
So do you want me, these are the questions that I think that you identified as the ones that you would really like to know the answers to as the highest priority. So do you want me to just read those now, or I can try to review them? One of them, the first one is, what is the liability to the city? And that, just to articulate that all the agreements in the past have been that there is no liability to the city. There are some changes possibly. So what is the liability to the city? Number two, and I see there is an answer to this in here, but it's a little bit vague, is what is the relationship with an app? How can we be making an agreement to put the water out on land with the golf course company, but not with an app? And then the third one was, I think, related to the DEQ. Are we responsible for, maybe you can remember this one, are we responsible for the discharge?
For the discharge permit. Like, if we're paying for the pipeline, and it's our pipeline, ultimately, are we going to be the ones on the hook for the permit? Like, is the permit going to be under our name? What is that, the nut of that question?
Okay. And then finally, and this is probably a question for Lori, which is, by adding a pipeline that goes out through the UGB and beyond, does that in any way set us up for the necessity of any annexation in the future? Like, if we are supplying this kind of water, is there any way we're getting on the hook for supplying other water or sewer services in the future?
So you're asking, does it set precedent that you would have to be, you'd be bound to help, provide for others that might ask in the future?
Yeah, like by making that physical connection with the infrastructure, or having that be connected to our infrastructure, is there, are we getting into something unwittingly?
I think you can make it so that it's not unwittingly, and that it's very discreet and specific and apply only to the situation. But I need to do a little research on that. I know there's, you know, there's land use laws and different rules about providing, you know, urban, quote unquote, urban services outside your UGB. And so I'm not sure it would necessitate an annexation necessarily, and I'm not sure it would set precedent. But it's something that needs to be looked at and spelled out. And so you make sure that you put sideboards on all that, and don't get the city into some, you know, like you just alluded to, some issue that in the future, they'd have to provide it to others, or that you'd get into some sort of land use boondoggle, you know, of extending your services outside the city. So I'll look into, I can research that. But I know it's been done. I know there's a process for doing this type of thing, I think, under state rules, so we can look into that.
And I had a very similar process, where a water main line wanted to be ran out to a property outside of the district, and it did need to be annexed in. So I think it's that annexed word that scares me the most, you know, regardless of the obligations. Just does that automatically behoove us to put other things out there? Or, you know, I think you know what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah.
So Lori, maybe we could just go back and ask you all of these questions. The thing about the liability, I think, is maybe one of the biggest questions that council has, because we've always, if you've reviewed this situation in the past, there has been an agreement to, that the city would not own or be liable for any future pipeline. But, and we're still trying to get clear on how this money can be spent. But do you have any things to tell us about liability and limiting liability?
Oh, well, yeah, definitely, not in specifics. But I will say that this draft use agreement that's been given to you by Elk River is pretty short on that kind of language. So I would definitely want to see some kind of indemnity and insurance provisions. And yeah, you need to have indemnity language that clearly places the risk and the liability, not on the city, but on other parties, as much as you can. So as we get into more specifics, that language will definitely need to be added to a future agreement.
Aaron, is the chicken/egg problem, is they need the agreement, I think, to move forward with DEQ, and we need plans to feel confident with our decisions. So that's one of the hairs that we need to split.
Yeah.
Another thing, that it's not with the agreement, but as we're moving forward with attorneys, and, you know, there's a cost to all of this stuff. And we're still talking about this legislative appropriation. And I don't feel comfortable spending a penny of it until we've decided on this agreement. So we need to consider how we're going to get that taken care of. A lot of people are upset, because they feel like we're putting this in front of the water use, and this and that. But it's important that we show that we can perform on this legislative appropriation. So we have to have the conversation. We don't want to make anybody wait. This is ultimately for an option of a secondary outfall for the city, which, that's one of my big questions, is looking at this wordage. And I kind of kick myself for not seeing that in 2017, about, you know, they accept it how they want to accept it, you know, or they will take a certain amount. To me, that makes it not an outfall, you know? And there's a limit to what they can take, which makes it not an outfall. It's not really a secondary outfall if it's limited, and we can't really rely on it. You know, that's another thing of the wordage, is we need to rely on that for perpetuity?
Perpetuity.
In perpetuity, yeah.
Can you say more about that, Pat? Because I don't, I remember you saying something about these, the amount of wastewater flows. And I'm not really following what, maybe you could say a little bit?
The Byram math would say that that 180,000 gallons a day they're asking for during the summer month is what was the max flow in 2013 in the winter of what we could provide, so.
They're putting a pond in, right?
Yeah, so theoretically, you fill it up in the wintertime, and it's fine. But do you want to be obligated to putting out more water than we feasibly have, you know, in the last?
I don't think we can.
That's, and that's exactly the kind of, that's why we're here today, is because we need to figure out...
Because there can't be a minimum that we provide. We can't...
We can't guarantee anything.
Can't guarantee anything, right.
We'll have a likely flow, but we, I mean, you know, like, right after the meeting last time, you guys know, I explained to you that we had these couple of drives bust out down at the wastewater treatment plant, and things like that are happening all the time. You know, the tires fall off the jalopy, and boom, we, could we, you know, we might be in the position of not being able to supply it.
And that's why if we have good conversations, we might be able to...
Well, I don't think, I don't think anybody's going to want to be unrealistic about it. I mean, if we don't have water, we don't have water. I think we could pretty spelt that out in the contract pretty easily. It's like, we're going to sell it behind their back, you know? Sell it somewhere else, and then you're getting it, or something, but...
And then it's got to be determined, I'm assuming by engineering, about how much exactly needs to go out during the...
So that was something that...
Existing outfall during the summer, producing the least.
Talked about during the original conversations about the outfall. What is the take? And there was some who thought that, you know, a daily blast or a weekly blast would be good. And there was some who thought that, you know, just a trickle, or for lack of a better terminology, probably not a trickle, but a constant flow would be better.
We need some more information about what the situation would be, where we plug up the end.
I think that we have to take a look at our equipment that exists. And there was some shadiness going on there, you know, there was perhaps shadiness, I don't mean that.
Well, do tell, Brett.
Well, there was always this, your outfall's failing. And here's a picture of it, and it's like a cartoon drawing of a broken pipe or something, you know what I mean? So, you know, if the engineers could tell us something like that, maybe. But I crabfish that spot, and it sands in quick, weeks, you know? Depending on how far it is off the bottom.
I think a dive team just recently inspected it, didn't they, or they're going to?
They're going to. Yeah, they have to have it. The divers would go out and do it. And I know that John Isador has been working with the group that's done before, and he knows that's on the, it's on the list to be able to get that taken care of.
We also, I don't know, with Crystal, Roy, and I worked with Tom at the field station to organize that too. So is there two separate efforts to do this now? Because Pat recommended that I make that effort.
And then Tom wrote back, and I think it was some sort of contractor angle or something, that I think maybe one of the divers he knew was willing to do it. But there was some separation that he had to have, but it's still in conversation. And just so everybody knows, this inspection is a regular inspection that the city is required to do. It has nothing to do whatsoever with this conversation that we're having, other than...
But we can ask for perhaps a more in-depth or more robust reporting.
Well, they're down there, yeah.
So there is a video from the last time it was done, and it's very clear. It shows how far off the sand it is, and fish, and all kinds of stuff. So that might be in your office somewhere.
I have that.
In my office somewhere. I have that.
In a CD form, and it was done when Terry was...
I got it from Crystal. I can share it.
Oh, you do have it?
Yeah.
Excellent. But yeah, it's done. It's something we have to do on a regular basis.
Absolutely. That's nothing new.
Engineers, though, I mean, what if one engineer says, do it this way? And one, I mean, maybe, is there going to be a place where we can clause in that our engineer makes the final... Our engineer stumps your, trumps your engineer, or, you know? Because like an attorney, you get two attorneys, all day long, they're arguing that the law says it their way. And so, I mean, it's, I think that there could be differences of opinion all through.
Well, ultimately, we are the ones to decide that, I believe.
It is. I just hate the idea of, I mean, I'm not an engineer, you know?
I like what you're saying. I mean, it's our engineer. We want to make sure that we have staff that works for us, and that we're looking out for the interests of the city.
And so years ago, I objected to one engineer doing the whole project. And it probably would have saved them some money. It might have been easier for everybody, but it seemed like that wasn't the way to do it. And we ended up breaking away from Dyer. Was it Dyer? Yeah. And then who did we get up to that?
Civil West.
Civil West, that's right. Okay, so... I guess the relationship between those two is not the same business, is it? Because sometimes that happens.
Well, I recall, we had two engineers of record at one time. Perhaps Aaron could shine some light on that. I believe both Dyer and Civil West were engineers of record at one time. We had two. We overlapped when we finished up our 2000 paint water treatment plant. Okay, so you did. Okay, good.
To go back to, may I switch back to, you know, Pat had identified these top four questions that he had, and one of them had to do with the NAP, the NAPS. And so Bill Cluse answered that question, but maybe Lori, you could give us an opinion on that? The thing is that, you know, the golf course has an agreement with the landowner, and that we're, would be sending it out onto the landowner's land. And so in the questions we asked, Mr. Cluse responded, yes, we can make a contract with the lease owner, not the property owner, provided that the NAPS have a clause in their lease to do this. So do you have any things to say about that for us, so we can understand that situation better?
I don't. I have not looked into that. But I think, I mean, I think from just a general standpoint, if Mr. Cluse is right, I mean, you can make an agreement with the lease owner. But actually, I think you got to look at the underlying lease and make sure that it can go... Some remedy can be sought after the actual landowner, because the lease could expire, or they may not be there anymore when something goes wrong. So I'd have to look closer at those documents, but I think there's ways, again, to do that as well. I would prefer, I mean, I think it's better to have it with the landowner. But, and lots of times in a lease, the landowner's lease with the lessie may say, you're not allowed to sublease this, or not allowed to enter into any agreements with anybody else without the owner's approval. So that kind of thing. So, you know, it just, I need to look at the details of it to give a good opinion.
Years ago, 10, 12 years ago, I was working with Southern Oregon Ocean Resource Team. Years ago, ten, twelve years ago, I was working, um, with Southern Oregon Ocean Resource Team and we, it was prior to Bohem and, and, um, and you have the offshore, there was no Oregon, there was no Owe, there was no Bohem. And it was like a free for all, these people, they packing junk out and, and trying it out in the ocean. And then they would abandon it, you know, they'd get their fifty million dollar grant that, and we ended up, um, working to require these performance bonds. And, and the performance bond said, you know, if you'll return it to its pristine condition, that means pipeline out of the ground. That's what that bond can take care of, pipeline out of the ground, outfall back into its brand new shape if we choose however we might agree. So there's things that you can do to make that happen. And, um, just have to, you know, think what may or may not occur. Because no one's going to want to, you know, i- if they, if it should be so unfortunate that, that they don't do well, then they're, they wouldn't be in a position to do much, right? So you've got to have a healthy, healthy performance bond that's, that entices them to get things done so they can get their money, they get that bond back, get that vacated bond, so.
Can I ask a question along those lines? And this might be for Pat and Tim, I think of you guys as pipe guys, maybe you're one.
No.
No, okay. So if we, um, if we were going to do this and, uh, we proceed and we just make the tee and something goes wrong, basically we close it off. And we go back to, do we just go back to square one and then we leave the plastic in the ground? I mean, what is the risk at that point to us? I guess I'm trying to understand.
I believe it's legal, and Pat might know better than I, I believe it's legal to, uh, vacate, uh, sewer lines. And, and we're not talking about a sewer line, we're talking about an affluent line, so it may be different.
Flush it and you get your chlorine residuals good, it's just like any other line or it should be transferable. But I think it probably depends on the type of pipe you use and all that good stuff. But yeah, it's, but yeah, I mean, I see merit to having a four inch pipeline through the middle of town regardless, just for that.
Right.
Just for a transmission line more specific, like I, there's a benefit to having a pipe in the ground.
Wasn't there two pipes eight feet apart when we started this?
Uh, there were two routes, two suggested routes, but I think there was only one line.
Five to eight feet apart, which is the distance.
No, I think you were just like, we were like, that was one of the concerns is why you need so much room if it's only one pipe. But I don't know if it was ever spelled out that there was two pipes in that ditch. It's been, how long has it been? Eight years, seven years, eight years, eight years since we started, because it was, it was like right when I started.
Actually, I think it's been longer than that.
Well, no, but I, yeah, but the, this agreement was right when I, or the, the wastewater treatment adjustment was, was when I started.
Oh, yeah.
Which was about a thousand years ago. Uh, so seeing this is what's tough is, is we, there's so much that we can get into in this discussion.
So there's other municipalities that have done this, you know, this isn't, we're not inventing anything. And, um, perhaps, uh, we could instruct staff to spend some time with one of those municipalities and feel on that a little bit, you know, because there's got to be some do's and some don'ts. There's got to be some, you know what we forgot to do, you know, and, and there's people who have lived this already.
And I think a couple of the instances, the city actually owns like the course or the, you know, like.
I mean, honestly, and I always, from the very beginning, I thought if we were going to do this, we should be partners in it. But that didn't, didn't flow, nobody seemed to think that was a very good idea.
I don't think we have the finances.
Well, it was, yeah, neither do they, they, at the time, I mean.
Right.
Maybe things would have gone faster or, or not gone at all or something, who knows, I don't know, but.
So do we, Lori, because it's a work session, could we, I don't know, what do you, I can't ask you guys.
You can build consensus, but you just can't, oh, I mean.
Oh, I can't get a consensus, can I, I can't?
Build, yeah, you can consensus build, you just can't, uh.
Well, I just, what my question is, is do you guys feel comfortable asking Aaron a few questions? If we can glean any information on like the DEQ permitting question or anything like that?
I, I think so, I mean, I think a few questions.
If we're not making a decision and we're just getting information.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I know, I just treading carefully, so Aaron, Will, you want to come up?
Oh, okay, that's right, sorry.
And if you don't mind stating your name and who you're with, like, is Aaron?
Hi, is Aaron speaking with the Dyer Partnership?
Okay, so my initial question would be, is that discharge DEQ permit, is that going to have to be in the city's name? Is that kind of what's holding us up?
My experience, yes, so I built the wastewater plant with the Dyer Partnership, the city's settling, they discharge to two recycled water uses. One is for Ford's Pond in Sutherland, the other is a privately owned golf course.
Okay.
The water that gets pumped, it's class A, in this case, class C wastewater, but the class A gets discharged to the golf course. The golf course has to operate under the city's recycled water use plan, which is part of the city's NPDS permit. So the city holds the permit, if the golf course violates, the city then has an agreement, the golf course has to comply to help the city stick within their permit. And that's where the boundaries of the agreement come into place. But yes, typically DEQ requires the NPDS permit to have the recycled water use plan and the city would then make sure that gets met.
So could it be something like that, is that, I'm not sure I heard that right, but you had, there was, can you pump it? Could we pump it to a holding pond and then that's ours and then they take it from there and then it's theirs? That's what they do in, in Sutherland, right?
Sutherland pumps directly from their wastewater plant to the golf course or to Ford's Pond. And then in the winter time, when it's not meeting class A, it goes to Kalapua Creek. And there's water rights and agreements in place with the golf course that says the golf course gets the first X amount of wastewater per day from that plant. After they've met that amount, the secondary user gets X amount and the third, fourth, fifth, they have agreements in place that outline how much water goes to where. They also have agreements that if the plant's down for upset plant or out of service, they don't have to provide the water.
That's just written into the contract.
That's correct, and the draft agreement that was given was, it's a skeleton with the intent to get, you know, consensus, if everyone's open to it, start getting all your questions, then start navigating through how to craft that document to meet everyone's goals.
And this is more cost effective to do this seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar project than to build the water rights out there or to tap into that other option that we've heard about?
Well, in my discussions with, with the developers, first and foremost, it's, they want to make a better environment for the whole area. And second of all, they understand that they have a backup water right, so say they pump out of the Elk River. If they have a backup water right, they have protection from things like drought or other means, so there is benefit to the development.
How, how can they pump it out of the Elk River? Because all the water rights in the Elk River are appropriated and the naps have certain water rights, but if they transfer those rights, there's going to have to be certain changes related to fish passage and stuff. So how can they be planning?
All the water rights on that, but I know you can purchase water rights, that you can put wells in, I don't know what their long-term plan is for water rights.
Okay, I just sort of think to say that.
I don't know if they have water rights or.
Elk River for water just is not really.
Winter water.
And you would be planning to, then you take it out of the river from, in the winter. Okay, thank you for that information.
Okay, and then I do have one question, on the second page of your answer, is it the second, it's the, yeah, the second page of the answers we got from your section nine. Um, the last sentence says periodic pumping to the ocean outfall would occur to ensure the line remains operational, but the effluent loads and pollutants would no longer enter the ocean. We're not pumping pollutants into the ocean, we're pumping treated effluent into the ocean. So that word doesn't, that's kind of saying that, I just, we're not pumping pollutants into.
If I talk to you, it's kind of who you talk to, they consider other things, so I understand what you're saying there, yes.
Do they consider that for pollutant?
Uh, depends on who you talk to, I mean, you have to do a mixing zone study on ocean outfalls and there's a zone called a mixing zone. At that level, it's no longer polluting, but if you talk to different people, they'll say it's all pollutants, but I'm not here to argue that.
No, I know, and I just, I did, just stuck out to me, I, because I, like, we, I didn't have enough time to look over these and, you know, diligently, and that was the first thing that stuck out. And everybody else in town is going to read this too, so I just kind of wanted to point out that we are not polluting the ocean.
Aaron, I have a specific question for you that wasn't on here, which is, um, I'm just wondering, will the treatment happen out at that pond? Or will it be happening at the pump station site here in town? Where will that you?
The treatment would happen at the plant and typically DEQ would require, where you meet class C effluent requirements would be at the wastewater treatment plant site.
So, but my understanding is that we treat it to a certain level and then you guys are going to treat it to another higher level, that's not true?
They will equally treat it at that point.
So.
They have to add chlorine to the line to keep it from regrowing bacteria and other harmful.
So, okay.
But we'll originally treat it.
Wouldn't happen like right next door, right, is what we were thinking.
Well, I'm just understand, my understanding was that we treat it to a certain level, but that you guys needed it as to a higher level because of irrigation where there's going to be interactions with people?
They can only take class C effluent, so if you had a permit that allowed periods of time where you weren't meeting class C, then you could discharge it somewhere else and they couldn't take it. They can only take class C to their development.
Okay, so do we already do class C right now?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay, and so there is no additional treatment after we, whatever we do and put out into the ocean is the way you'll be able to use it?
As far as my understanding, I haven't been to that plant in probably seven years, but that was the way it was.
Okay, thank you.
Essentially a tee, you could valve to either the ocean outfall or if the golf course was developed in the pond, you could pump there.
Okay, terrific, thank you.
Would that require the compensation to be on our property or could it be on the?
Pump station could be on either property, the question came up when you received your legislative funding. If that's funded through Business Oregon, those improvements typically have to be on city-owned property. But from the ten thousand foot view, whether that pump station's on their property in a right of way or at the plant, it doesn't have any input as far as the feasibility of the concept of pumping effluent to, to the development site.
Right, so, and, and that's the thing, so much has changed in the last eight years that we're just trying to do our, do diligence. It's hard not to seem like combative is not the right word, but it's just like, it's our, it's our job to do, or do diligence and there's.
I'll just ask a lot of questions, there's going to be a lot of questions and the feeling I get from the applicant is they want your input, work through it and maybe you come up with, it maybe does not have to be an agreement right now, but just a general consensus that yes, if, if you can get all your needs met, then you're still in favor of doing that. Because they've asked us to start looking at the design of that pond. And the first question I have is, do I design it for effluent storage or do we just design it for their water rights or whatever they are? And so, as in each year, I want to know if we're going to be, I designed those to a different level.
Yeah.
Make sure the criteria is met, and so they wanted to know if we, you know, answer your questions and see if that's something we should pursue.
Got you, so those four questions are the big first step, I think, in, in the next workshop or the next discussion.
So to just follow up on the one that we just talked about, which is that we would have the permit and then the golf course would have to operate under the permit that we own or that we have. So does that mean like that we would have to have, uh, a public works agreement or something where like one of our staff per people might have to go out and make sure that you're, that the golf course operation is functioning properly under our permit? I mean, we, we would have to figure something out because we would be responsible ultimately.
Something would be in place to cover that, but yes, that would happen.
Okay.
Sutherland inspects the golf course, DEQ still goes out to the golf course on behalf of inspecting for the city's permit. There's a relationship there and there's agreements in place that cover those types of activities. Back to your question about the naps and the different properties, uh, my experience on a different note is that when you apply for the DEQ, um, application to irrigate the property. There's land use compatibility statements and other permits through DEQ that will be required to go back to the original property owner as well. And the applicant will have to.
Sign off.
The author will have to work through that, but there will be a process where DEQ will then make sure they get signed off by the actual property owners.
Do you have any experience with annexation or how that works with?
I, I do not have a lot, other than I've worked with the surveyors, they've done the revisions for the city planners and that part of it, no, I, I've not done annexation.
And the only reason, just to reiterate that I say that is because when I was working at Niseka, when they were first starting the conversation about that fire training place, it had to be annexed in to connect the dots on that pipeline. Totally different animal, but enough proximity to make me question. What were the other ones named?
Well, we, we've, I think we've talked about those top, um, top four that you had, Pat. The liability, our responsibility for the permit and then the relationship with the naps and the landowner and then the annexation, those are the top ones. But there are all these others, I mean, those I think were ones that, do you have any further questions or anybody about those, those four?
I think the relationship with the naps is important because the city would like to be looking for a secondary outfall. So if something were to happen to the golf course or a new owner decided they didn't want to use the affluent from the city, perhaps the naps would want to use that water for irrigation or something like that. I think that's why the city thinks it's important to have a, you know, have a relationship with the property owner as well.
Cause the way the findings are, it seems like it's really not a stable secondary out, outflow.
Well, what I tried to put out in my answers is there, it's a dynamic out there where they have X amount of acres, they know they're going to develop X amount and they have the opportunity to put a pond. They've asked me in our office to size the pond for as big as we can make it, so until we get a little further design, they have expressed that they would like to take all of the plant's effluent line, a- a- all their affluent flows. Part of that's going to be come down to, well, we have X amount of acres that we can irrigate year round. Then that process would go through DEQ, ask for permission and approval, but that's the goal. But right now there has a hint to start looking at all that, they can't get the general consensus that the city's interested in supporting that. So if they felt like.
But it kills the secondary outfall approach.
It's not an outfall.
I mean, if that's, it's becoming less of a secondary outfall with, with every word that's spoken almost here.
I don't really understand what you're saying, can you just articulate that a little bit more?
Well, i- if they want it all, they'd like to have all of it and they already get, I mean, according to this, they would like to have all, pretty much all of it now.
With the exception of maintenance affluent through our pipeline, which we have to reserve to.
They would like to have it all, but, but then that becomes a liability, you know, is what that becomes now and now you're just, you're maintaining this device just to maintain the device if you don't, you know.
It's something that we're actually still paying for, paying off and that we're invested, we've invested significantly in and.
That's why I think it's good to have a secondary outfall.
Yeah, well.
But if it's not, then.
Yeah, well, just, and also just for context, uh, very few other places have a secondary outfall, I mean, other cities.
Hey Lori?
Yes.
On this sewer treatment facility water use agreement, uh, section five point one says first DRPD is required to pay for and maintain the affluent piping and infrastructure to this property. So that's part of our original agreement, but now that we have this legislative appropriation on the table, they wouldn't really be, uh, paying for it. So I, it's just, I just noticed it when I was reading through it, is that, could that hurt us in this conversation?
Yeah, I mean, it might be good to read, to, to look at that with new eyes now that this funding's come in and, and figure out a, a way we reword that perhaps, yes.
Which would mean we would have to reword this sewer treatment facility agreement before we moved on to the bigger agreement?
Yes, that would be my recommendation.
I, I want to go back and ask you this Lori too, I mean, I asked this question to the Dyer Partnership about the, like, all the agreements that we're going to have to have. And what we, the answer we got is a little bit more like the process from the developer's side, the different things they need to do. I, I'm, from conversations I've had, I'm under the impression that we will have many different agreements that the city is going to enter into. There's going to be this master agreement, but now we've already heard that we're going to also have like, to have to have an agreement because they're going to be under our DEQ permit, that there will be, that there will be just multiple types of agreements to come. But I've been wanting to get an understanding of what all those agreements are, because I'm afraid that we're just going to be asked to kind of eat a little bite of the elephant again and again and again and, and that we won't have, we don't have the big picture. So can you maybe help us understand the nature of the kinds of agreements that we're going to be needing going forward? And, um, is it okay to sign a master agreement? I mean, that kind of gets us on a path, but what? I mean, that kind of gets us on a path, but what if we then, you know, four steps down the road, there's an agreement that has parts that we don't want? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, that is, counselor, that brings up an interesting question that I've been thinking about while I was looking at all these various documents. And I think it may be a little bit premature to enter into a, enter into a sewer treatment facility water use agreement. My recommendation would probably be to do like a, an MOU or an MOA memorandum of understanding or agreement um, that kind of does exactly what you're saying, like lays out what the process is and what agreements will be necessary. And doesn't really, isn't, isn't binding, but it's just sort of laying out the the gate, you know, it's like, it's like looking at the rules of monopoly before you start playing monopoly, like figuring out what all the different steps are going to be. And that's, that's very common in something as, you know, as, I I don't want to say complicated, but this is a little bit complicated. There's some different layers, there's some moving parts. So, you know, something where there's moving parts and different agreements needed and different approvals needed from different state agencies or federal agencies or what have you. It's not, it's very normal to have some kind of, I don't want to say master agreement, it's a, it's sort of a rules agreement, you know, it's a memorandum of understanding. And, um, and then after that, start going through and and executing the different agreements that you need. And have, there's usually a timeline and that type of thing, an MOU. I don't know if you've ever dealt with like a development agreement, but but lots of times there, it just lays out, it it lays out where the funding's coming from, who's paying for what, a rough timeline. Of course, it might not be adhered to exactly. We all know things go slower than we want them to sometimes. So, yes, I think it would be really good to have an understanding of what's going to all be needed. And, you know, I did a little research this afternoon and there are other cities in the state that have done, you know, these types of agreements where they were, you know, recycled waters being given or piped to the golf courses. So it's like, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. Your your situation is going to be unique. I think every situation is sort of unique depending on the location, but we don't have to sort of reinvent the whole process, I don't think. So I'd, I'd suggest that that's where we started with some kind of memorandum of understanding that that I can work on with Mr. Close and or and staff and we could all kind of get together and like figure out what needs to be done. And it just lays out, and I don't know if that'd be good enough for DEQ. I I still am trying to understand, does the city really need to sign something in order for DEQ to approve something? I'm not, I'm not, I haven't seen that answer in black and white. I've seen the developers say, yeah, it needs to be done. And that may, that may be true. I just, I need to verify that for my own, you know, representing the city, I need to verify that independently. So anyway, um, that's my take on the whole thing at this point.
It's a super helpful response because I've been literally asking about that for months and that's the most helpful response I've gotten. I think it would be very useful to understand all those agreements that we're going to have to enter into. For example, I didn't understand that we were going to have it have to be our permit and that whatever happens out, water use in the golf course would be kind of under our, you know, our authority or responsibility. So it's useful to understand these things.
There, there are a few provisions that once you apply to DEQ, they could give an exception to that, but that's the norm.
Okay.
And then that draft mass agreement, I didn't come up with the title of it, that was just another sample that was from another city. It was amended multiple times and ultimately that was the final. So I think they went through the same process. There, there was amendments to it as DEQ had the requirements, I'm sure that.
This was the final? This document was the final?
There was a, there was parts of it taken out that didn't apply to this particular outfall, but that was a very short agreement. I can provide Lori with the original document there.
Okay.
Yeah, that was presented with the intention that everyone's going to go back and revise it. We expected attorney comments to be inserted in there. They had different, I can't remember all of it, but I can provide the document to her.
Okay.
Because I am not an attorney, I did not write all that, so.
Right, and I think that's, that's really coming in new and just stepping into this. I haven't had the history of all of this and so there just seems to be so many questions and it's, it's just very large. And so having a specific thing that says we're going to give X number of gallons to X number of what and, you know, for, if it's going to be under our purview as public works and, you know, that's something that I'm going to have to be thinking of of how much time is going to go into this by the city and and how are we going to make sure that, you know, that extra miles of pipeline and pumps and things that that if we're responsible for that ultimately, how that's going to fit into what we can do as a city, you know, to to help take care of that part too. So I think it's, I think it's thoughtful to think of this as just an MOU. And then that is the question of is that good enough for DEQ to start that process and to do that because?
I think there was just, you had to get something on the, on the brainstorming board and that was it. It it could be an MOU, it could be any kind of agreement.
Okay.
And then, you know, the maintenance of the pipeline. If if the development wanted to pay for it, there could be a maintenance agreement. I'm, I'm quite sure the attorney could work up some kind of a maintenance agreement that said they paid for maintenance or they can review that, come to terms on that, so.
And again, for me coming in, the idea of recycling the wastewater and finding ways that also could could be helpful to the city and some of that too. I mean, I think there's, I think the, the big understanding of trying to move for wastewater recycling and using that in a thoughtful way and doing that is is spot on. But I think there's also a lot of uses that we've talked about even with the city, you know, as we're looking at that. So, um, again, more research is needed for me too because I don't understand level A, level B, level C, how much chlorinization, you know, all of that, because there's a lot of uses for recycled wastewater, so.
You can talk to engineers, tho- though, I think they'll support the same conclusion I have is that DEQ has an anti-backsliding on their permitting, which means it doesn't get any looser, it only gets tighter. And with an ocean outfall and all the requirements, they make you monitor every five years and you have two mixing zones, those restrictions get tighter and tighter. As those get tighter and tighter, it's going to be more of a burden on the city unless you have it placed to irrigate, which is a Class C effluent. I don't see Class C effluent going away.
And and again, just I'm, I'm ignorant on it, but is Class C the highest level?
I know Class A would be the highest.
Okay. And so that would be able to be out and around with, to be able to irrigate and have people walking through.
Pond's a Class A, they have boating and fishing in that pond.
Okay.
It's almost drinking water. I've seen people drink it, but I I'm not going to drink it.
Okay. Some places they.
We sell the pipeline after we put it in? Like, if we put this in, could we sell it?
Yeah. Are you looking at somebody standing behind?
No, I'm just kind of like asking rhetorically, like, it's like, it's worth three quarters of a million dollars?
Uh, DEQ's not.
They're not.
No, I, that, well, that takes that out of the agreement.
I I have a question for you guys. So, you know, I I think there's some, we're kind of pussyfooting around some other things, but, um, if, if the agreement that you guys, I wasn't part of the council, I think three of you guys were on the council that decided to do this. I don't think you were originally was right on the original agreement.
No.
Um, if we, if you guys agreed to the agreement that the city would not own this or be responsible for maintenance, but now maybe we will, does that give you any pause or change your thinking about this? Um, I mean, if we're just going to like, like, we're going to own it and then have a lawyer write something that say we're not, we're not liable? I mean, my understanding, I mean, do you feel comfortable with that kind of?
I think that there's going to have to be some specific language in the contract that clearly spells out. I mean, we could be responsible with the assurance of the bond. Our, our partner, our, that's where the partner thing, you know, how you partner with somebody or whatever. But yeah, that's different. I would have definitely looked at that differently from the beginning had, had I, uh, been told that this was going to be yours, because that wasn't originally, originally there was, you know, um, fire hydrants and.
That pump station on Wyoming.
All, all kinds of good stuff going on out there, so. Yeah, things have changed a little bit, but. The, the prize to me is that, um, oh, oh, and 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 to your point, there's not a whole lot of offshore outfalls. If you look at people with second, you know, municipalities with secondary outfalls, it, it's fair to say that there isn't a lot of them, but it's also should be mentioned that not many are offshore.
Well, I think every coastal community has, in Brookings, Gold Beach.
Gold Beach is an irrigation system.
At the airport, right?
You know what I mean? Of the 300 cities.
Yeah, right.
In Oregon.
Vandens goes into Estuary of the.
Kerry Creek, yeah, it's terrible.
Now, is there anybody that ever treats the Class C effluent to be potable water?
Portland Bridge, bear with it, Class C is not potable water.
No, but can it be treated to be potable water?
You're saying to get it to Class A, if A is the best, to get it to that point?
Is A potable?
Think DEQ allow, Oregon Health Forty would allow that.
Nobody's doing that.
Not in Oregon.
In order to do it, you have to put it into a body of water, like a natural body of water and then draft out of that. So it's not like the effluent has to go into a body of water and then you can use it, you know, after it's treated, but it's, there's a few hoops to jump through.
There, in Southern California, there's one waterway where water is used 15 times. It goes in and out, in and out, cities out of taps, down toilets, treated. It's kind of amazing.
They're pumping water back into the aquifer now out of the.
And that's why, that's, that's the thinking of if you pump it back into a body of water, you're not diminishing the, uh, aquifer as much.
I'm just wondering what the cost of that would be.
You had a desalination plant, probably cheaper than.
Yeah.
That would be a pretty big deal.
In fact, I saw some of those, uh, a while back and brought the pass attention.
Makes it a lot more valuable if we can do that, if we could afford to do it.
Well, and you know, you're, another, back to the partner thing, I mean, we're talking about, we're talking with these people who have access to clean water.
We are gaining a little bit with this meeting. We know that we need to consider an MOU to kind of set the ground rules for this. We got our four big questions out there.
I think, given our current situation with water, why we aren't even touching on the idea of 10 gallons of dirty water for one gallon of clean water? You know, why aren't we even talking about that? It just like.
Because half of our water, the re, our bit, one of our biggest water problems is that we lose half of it through our pipes. So, uh, you know, we don't really have a water source problem so much as we have a water loss problem.
Right.
And, I mean, I don't, I don't think, I mean, you're saying we should be asking them for drinking water from out there?
What I'm saying is, is that we're putting one pipe in to where there's clean water that they can access and we could potentially put two pipes in and get clean water in the trade of, maybe. You know, I don't, I just like, what's out there? What, what, what can you do? What can you work out? Let's work a deal. You know, we're going to be looking at a hundred million dollar project to get our, by the time, maybe seventy-five, eighty million dollars to do our infrastructure that we need to do. Or one pipe going to, you know, and this is a thought, it's just a thought, it's just a thought.
I think we have our other own water sources that we've been working on. And we have three water rights and I don't think lack of water is our problem. I think it's the lack of infrastructure that's our problem, but.
Right, but 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 what I'm saying is, one of them could maybe take 10 years and one could take a year. That's all I'm saying, you know.
One concern I just now came up with, Aaron, is we have a big I and I problem, which is the water infiltrating into our, our manholes and stuff, you know? And so, you know, it's something you want to fix or something as a city you need to address. What if we get to a point where we do fix all our manholes and then that cuts the gallonage, you know, a lot? I've, I've seen the manholes around here and there's pretty good I and I. So it's like, those are the little details that, that I worry about. Because what I'm saying is if we, if our manholes were up to snuff and they didn't have the groundwater coming in like they do, then we won't be able to provide the effluent that is needed if we, you know what I mean? It's just going to affect that number if we get those manholes grounded and fixed like they.
I don't see that impacting their decision, if that's what you're asking.
What's that?
I don't see that impacting their decision.
Yeah, no, I just meant like in the future, you know, you know, if it, if it did get fixed with the, what? And that's really what we need to define too, more than anything, is what we can provide and what, you know, because theoretically you just have to wait for another month if we can only provide a hundred thousand gallons instead of a hundred and eighty.
It sounds like Southern worked some language into their contract that that covered that, right?
Yeah, they, they seem to have, they have a very good working relationship from what I've seen with the golf course and the Friends of Ford's Pond. And I don't have copies of all those agreements, but somehow they worked it out.
Friends of Forest Pond?
Friends of Ford's Pond is the community around the Ford's Pond. I think the city actually owns the pond, but they communicate with the Friends of Ford's Pond. And Christie is the city manager there.
Christie?
Yeah.
Would there be any possibility of having like, uh, uh, just an irrigation field so that this could be a fully functional outfall? So that it could be?
That's what they've asked me to look at and they've designated X amount of acres and they've asked me if they could irrigate that year-round. That's one of the processes I'd have to talk to DEQ to, to look through that, yes.
Well, I mean, that's obviously one of our big questions is if it's an outfall or a faucet that's asking for, so that's another one of the.
Their concern, my concern as an engineer to them is, yeah, I have data from the last facility slam. If you get a big, you know, 2008, 2009 rainstorm event and you're, you have 2 million gallons a day, I have to convey to them, they have to be able to handle 2 million gallons a day.
Right.
But then that's a bigger pump station, way bigger pipeline than was ever conceived in these conceptual plans.
So we had, like, this winter, I think we had the biggest, um, numbers ever because of, do you remember that, Pat? Like, the amount of water passing through our wastewater treatment plant was like, I don't remember what they were, but Crystal was saying it was like higher than ever before.
Those are the manholes, so, you know.
I, I might be hard pressed to ever recommend you get rid of your outfall. Whether you keep it for emergency outfall only.
I guess I was asking from the standpoint of that outfall failed. Like, this isn't a secondary outfall unless it's an outfall if it fails. That's the only way I can see of it as an outfall. And an outfall to me means that you'll take all the effluent whenever it's needed to take. And this agreement doesn't really, it's not worded that.
Well, if you look at the, the 180,000 gallons per day covered every day of the max month dry weather flows.
I guess I'm not asking my question right. I'm, I'm asking if our outfall failed.
Yeah.
But and you're telling us that we can only give you so many gallons a day or at any point that that would stop because it's summertime or whatever, then we don't have a secondary outfall. Like, we don't have the option that, that, that's not an outfall, is what I'm saying. If it's controlled at all, if it's anything but an open pipe that discharges into that pond and then is taken care of for the extra or whatever, then I have a hard time wrapping my brain around it being an outfall.
Because it says right here, shall not be required to take sewer effluent number two on the agreements. So if they're not required to take it and it's really not a secondary outfall.
But it also says in here, um, that either party can end the contract in 30 days, so.
Yeah, so there's another angle of, that, that right there makes it not.
Well, but if.
If you're looking for a guarantee, I don't think anything in life is a guarantee. You're not guaranteed your health, you're not guaranteed anything. So we have to decide if the benefit is better than not having it. That's, I mean.
Because I'm not even sure what the benefit is.
I could tell you from my experience, like, City Lakeside has a Class C field by their wastewater pond or wastewater plant, excuse me. They also irrigate on the airport.
Correct.
We're in the process of designing them a new membrane plant up on top of the hills to come into City Lakeside. We have to shut down the main line, which is their Class A line to do that conversion. The fact that they have a secondary field, which is the Class C field to irrigate it, is saving them millions of dollars in bypass pumping and or hauling. So anytime you, from a wastewater engineer's perspective, anytime you have two options, whether it's full flow or three quarters full flow, you have the option to do construction sequencing and work around the parameter versus have no option. That's my perspective. Any option from a wastewater engineers is better than no options at all. And that's what I could add to that. Because right now, if, if I was engineering, you asked me to fix your outfall because it was broken, I would say, how are we going to, what are we going to do for temporary? Right, I couldn't even sequence it around like summer months. Like, say, we're going to send all the water in the summer to the property out here, do a construction sequencing window for months to rehab. That's the immediate benefit I could see too.
So, did the city consider that, having an irrigation field for a secondary outfall if we had to do maintenance or if something failed?
Could you consider it a possibility, but is the chance of them, maybe you have to go through the DEQ process, you have to have all the land?
Right.
Right, that probably, yeah.
Right, well, that's a different option for a lot of the cycle.
I mean, the City Lakeside asked me to look into the feasibility of getting rid of their Class A field, which is the airport, and then turn it back into property. And DEQ is not going to allow them to get a new outfall.
Right.
So you're, pretty much, they're stuck there.
So could DEQ put the kibosh on this? Like, could they, if, if we're going through this process, could they say, no, we're not doing any more?
Rarely would I say, I don't know exactly what DEQ would say, but per my interpretation of the rules, I, if you meet the criteria, I, they tend to give you approvals.
Okay.
So.
Again.
There are setbacks, there's all kinds of requirements. They may put in stricter monitoring, uh, I can't tell you exactly what they're going to acquire. But typically, I would anticipate if you follow their rules and their guidelines, they would typically give you approval.
One other little. One other little minutia thing that I still just can't get nailed down is that one of the routes was hanging that pipe off the bridge. And so now I'm doubled down on, I didn't think that ODOT would let people hang pipes off of bridges anymore. I know they won't do it with water lines, um, so how?
I have not evaluated the two options. They presented them to me, they were done by Stunster Engineering and that's one of the processes. If, if there was agreement and they started to move ahead, we would review that and provide comments to the, to the development. But.
Does that mean that that initial plan isn't really valid right now then?
It's a feasibility plan and it depends on that is feasible. So that's the stage they're at, you're not at final design right now. There may be a plan to hang something on a bridge, then you find out, yeah, that bridge is not sizeably rated. Or you may find out that bridge is going to be replaced in five years. So therefore we may want to bore it or do something different. It was strictly a feasibility plan. I had no objections to what Stunster did. It was strictly a, here's your feasible options.
And I'm sure you appreciate how difficult it is to be talking about an agreement that we don't have plans for.
Right, that's where I need to rely upon city attorney and the city manager to help navigate and bridge that with, just get a general understanding.
So you do have a, a understanding of where the possibility of the, where the path would go?
Yeah, I've got the maps.
Two, that's the two CUP.
They presented, it's in the, it was in the conditional use application from two thousand.
Which, which Melissa doesn't, hasn't seen because she hasn't been here and beca- and many, and some of our other council members haven't seen because they were not part of the original members who made this decision. So this whole like accrete, one thing on top of another, and then nobody understands what's, you know, not everyone understands what's going on is not the optimal situation in my view.
It was, you can go over this little bridge on Arizona, right?
That's one of the options, the other was.
Or out on the highway.
Right.
Out on the highway?
And I guess that's for me.
Oh, no, it was, that's right, it was down.
I think it was down Idaho to.
Madrona?
Around the loop.
Down to Madrona, right? And across the bridge and then the other one went out around Loop.
On the loop.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
And that one doesn't cross the creek or the water, that one didn't.
But if you get into designing, you find environmental concerns, you find wetlands or anything like, I mean, it's customary that these will get revised and modified. And there'd be input from the city on that.
So I guess for me, and again, I would love to see some of these kind of repackaged in something that, that is current. That would be, that would be, I know that's what the feasibility study is and to figure out what can actually be. But I feel like there's lots of things that, because it's been a long historical situation, that kind of bringing something together that would be from an engineering perspective that would say, what are we specifically talking about in today's verbiage and what, what have we decided? We talked the other day, um, you know, the Wyoming pump station. For a long time it was, you know, the hydrants and the things and getting rid of the Wyoming pump station because this pump station was going to take care of it. And there was some confusion on if that was still a pro, right? Cause you know, having our, our pump updated or not used, that was something that I think early on, people on the council thought, oh, that's another pro to the city. Cause that's ultimately what we're looking for, right? I mean, I, I'm, I have to advocate for the city and say, what's the best for our, for our folks? And how can I help support that? And I guess I just feel like there's lots of little nebulous pieces of information floating around. And I would like to see, I'm a visual person, I want to see it in black and white so I can talk to all of our people and they can hear good feedback from our, from our citizens of what are, what are we actually talking about? And, and that's the part that I am having a hard time getting a hold on. I feel like we're looking at all these agreements and all these things. And I don't have just a clean, clear understanding of what it is you folks are doing.
I'll, I'll be glad to talk to developers and see if they want us to put something together for you, simplify that, a, a simple memorandum. But ultimately, first and foremost, are you looking for a place to send class C water, which they're willing to take? Second of all, you, you gotta pump it because it's too far. And third is a, is the pipeline, it can be routed multiple ways. That's not really what we're trying to focus on right now. But then ultimately they're going to design a pond that will receive that. And they need some direction on how big pond and those kinds of things.
And that's what you're coming in to do is to really design that piece.
Start working on the road, start working on the pond. They want to get the pond started right away. And, um, any input we can give them on, you know, things to, if we're looking at class C pond versus, um, just other sources, it's a little bit different of how I would approach that.
Okay. So that makes sense. Me, it seems like one of our, like, you know, we've got all these little knots here of what comes first, chicken and egg. And, um, you know, I, I forget in here that we asked the question of what do you think that seven hundred and fifty dollars is for? And I think you said we can discuss the options. And, uh, I think, you know, we have a lot of needs at our, at our plant. I mean, I literally feel like it, things are blowing out there quite often. So, you know, we may need to spend some of that money on our plant. But we also need to, I mean, if we're going down this path, and spending money on lawyers or our own engineers, like for us to be able to access that money to spend it, we have to come up with a plan for that money. So that's a little bit, gets back to what you were saying, Pat, of like, how are we gonna like even go down this path? Spending money, you know?
The only way I see it happening is they fit the bill until the agreement's made that, that this money is going to be spent on that. And then they could get reimbursed after that is done. You know what I mean? Now, if the agreement was made and we do spend those funds, then they could ask for reimbursement for these actions going towards a project. Like our attorney costs, all the stuff we're doing right now before that money's available. Like who's paying for that?
Right now it's our, our taxpayers paying for it.
Right, and this document says we're not going to spend a dime. So that's something that needs, need to be remedied. And I don't have to ask for a consensus to say that's going to be on the agenda this next meeting is we gotta have some sort of agreement or something along those lines that we're not spending money on this until we have agreed to spend money on this. Lori, is that something you could help us out with?
Definitely, yes.
I think, I think that's one of the first questions. Actually, no, I don't even have to ask, I just put it on the agenda, that's one thing I can do.
I can say one other thing too. Or you were in the middle of something, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
I don't know what it was, go ahead.
Okay, well, I just have to say, I would be remiss to not bring up that, I don't know if you guys get your letters and email from citizens, that, you know, I've been getting said it's letters from citizens this week that are concerned about uh, the city supporting the golf course moving forward. Not for the specific reasons that we've talked about, but for reasons like who's going to be fighting the fires out there when we have such a little firefighting force, you know, about housing, about all those things. And, um, you know, because we've always had this, since I've been on council, this discussion has only been able to, we've only talked about the golf course in the context of the CUP. We've never been able to have those larger conversations. And, um, that I hear my, I hear citizens asking for or being really disappointed that we're not thinking about the future of our community or thinking of what kind of community we want to have. And I'm not saying that we can't have a fishing town and an arts town and a golf town. But it, um, I just kind of feel like if we don't have that discussion, there are people in town who feel like we're not listening. So I don't know if anybody else gets their email and reads these letters from people and cares what our citizens are saying, but I would just feel remiss to not bring that up.
No, I agree with that.
I think we all care what our citizens are saying.
Yeah, it, sometimes we have to remember that a lot of the letters that we get are from people who don't live in, weren't, they're not our constituents. There are people who live outside the city and they might not like the golf course, one thing or another. I've thought about all those things and I've had conversations. There's, I, I think there's two kinds of people. There's people who want to see a golf course and there's people who don't want to see a golf course. And they're going to use every bit of data or, or influence or anything they can find to make their point.
Well, you can see it like that, but I can also see it like, I mean, I, for example, the argument about like firefighting and who's going to fight our fires.
The NAP's already paid, the NAP's already paid for, uh, property tax for the fire protection.
For CCPFA or for what? For, for the, our local fire department, our local volunteer fire department of twelve people to take care of it?
We, it's not our fire department.
Right.
We lease that, we, we rent that. Buy that service. That's, uh, that's not the city of.
Oh, what is the point of order?
What do you got, Greg?
I'm sorry, I just, I, I, I'm sorry.
No point of order then?
No, we haven't.
No, this is just.
I'm sorry, yeah, I was, I missed.
I flipped.
What, can I just finish the, just the meta argument that I'm making, which is that to me, I see there's pros and cons. I mean, you could say, oh yeah, there's some people who like golf and some people who don't like golf or whatever or want this. But I think there's also pros and cons, like arguments that are made and that we have the pros that we've been talking about of the outfall, the secondary outfall, poss- the possibility of this pump station, uh, the possibility maybe that some of this money could be spent to help upgrade some of the things we really need to do at our, um, wastewater. I mean, there's this list of pros and there's a list of cons. And I guess what I'm saying is if we look at this, um, analytically and, and thoughtfully, you know, are there ways that we can mitigate the cons? Or can we show and demonstrate to our citizens that we've actually, really actually thought about that? Because so much time has passed since you guys made the decision, the three of you guys made the decision, however many years ago. You know, does that put us on a better path to the future, um, anyway? And then being informed by those kinds of pros and cons, then yeah, then we can say, well, wait a second. Like what are we going to do about housing here? And we could ask ERPD, what are your plans for housing? How is this going to be? Is that going to be, you know?
I, I hear a lot about gentrification.
Yeah.
And gentrification is occurring without growth, perhaps faster. And so we, I, I don't lose track of that because the cost of government's going up every single day and we are not making more money every single day. So gentrification can happen with a golf course or without one. And so that's an easy one to put down, you know? You really got to holistically look at things if, if, you know, and, and be honest about it. Like, like I said, I've upset, uh, both, both sides of, of this debate with just, you know, there, I don't think there's a this seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is seven hundred and fifty dollars less that we're going to need for our infrastructure.
Depending on how we spend it.
Right, but it is, i- i- if, if we need seventy million, there's one of the million gone. And we have a consultant who is also a state senator, who's also on a very powerful, the board, who is likely to help us with more resources if we are to play along. And, and that's the truth of the matter. It, I, I, there's ideals, there's, there's, you know, what you want to see, what you don't want to see. But we've got wooden pipes that we're pumping through, they're failing. And then we have, we don't have any wooden pipes anymore.
Think so anymore, I think the last piece was sitting in here, I wish it was still in.
Oh, I thought we had some still.
I have storm culverts, yes.
Anyway. That was always the, the big thing was the wooden pipe.
Okay, so I guess, so what you're saying is there's a deal, there's a game here to play. Senator Smith wants us to do this, so we gotta do along with it.
I didn't say we gotta do anything, but to our citizens who are concerned about getting water out of their spigots. If that's really what we're talking about, then it would seem like making deals with people who can help us to that end would be a good idea. Aside of what you think of the golf, I mean, it's a really small golf course. This isn't going to be Banded Dunes. It's never going to be Banded Dunes. And, and I think we gotta really, what we saw in Bandon, you know, I don't think that's what we're looking at here. We don't, I, I think Bandon is likely to see more growth than we are. North Bend's likely to see more growth than, than we are. But what we can get is water to our people if we play along. I, I, I mean, help, maybe we can get help, maybe we can't, you know, maybe that's just my optimism, but.
I, I would say, I mean, I would just say I've been busting my butt for the past year and working on grants. And I think there's lots of ways one can work at getting it, but I'm just going to say that. Does anybody have any other views about this other than Brett?
I would say like, like understanding your concern and, and being very compassionate of it, that it's tough because we're making a decision, obviously that's outside of the city limits, but the actual golf course, like that's out of our purview on this vote, other than the outfall. But as a counselor or anybody that's a voter, whatever influences you is going to influence you regardless of what the topic is. So all of that community feedback and everything is hugely important because you're going to be the one that bases your vote on the information that you got, you know what I, I mean? So you can't, you can't split those hairs in your head, even though I say, oh, we're only deciding about the city stuff. You're ultimately going to make that decision based on all the information that you have. So it's hard when we get the group emails too though, because it's like, who's going to reply? How do we reply?
Well, we don't reply.
No, I know, but that makes it tough because you want to reply, you know? Or you want to say received or thank you for your input.
Well, I think you can do that individually, we just can't reply off.
Yeah.
I personally think, um, you know, there are problems and we know there are a lot of problems. There's a lot of problems we can't solve as city councillors. Uh, some of these problems are housing, to be honest with you. There's housing problems throughout the United States and there's bigger cities than ours that can't fix them.
And this puts even more pressure on us.
But it's free enterprise, that's how our country was built. Our country was built on free enterprise and, you know, if we can work out our differences to get this program up and running and it benefits us, that is what our concern is.
Right.
We can't control a lot of the other things. Honestly, I don't believe we can. Because if we do, then we just start saying no to everything. Like for instance, when Dollar General came to town, there were people that said, oh my God, it's the worst store in the world. I'm not saying it's the best store in the world, but I'm saying it did provide jobs. People argue they aren't family wage jobs, we can't control that. But I will tell you this, Dollar General is a very, very busy business in the city of Port Arford. So was it a bad thing or was it a good thing? It gave a lot of our senior folks a place to go and buy goods at a little bit cheaper rate. It provided products that we couldn't buy in the city of Port Arford at the time. So I don't know, I, I, if we can benefit from a secondary outfall, I think it might be something we want to look at. That's, that's, that's it. And when, when you say the three of us were involved, there were different votes along the line, but it was a full council that was involved at the time. And, and I can't, for the life of me, we have to go back through the minutes to, to figure out who voted yes and who voted no. I think for the most part, the majority of the council voted for it. That's neither here nor there. We're beyond that, plans have changed a little bit. We have to see if they can apply to helping us as a city and our citizens. So, um, and some of the stuff Brett speaks of is the truth. I think we're being watched as to how we work with this seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have to decide if it benefits us or not, so.
Who pays for the actual trenching and laying the pipe and building that?
My question is, I don't think seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars does it, but.
It's not even close.
Say that it does, so I don't know.
It's a four inch pipe and they're boring. I think it's a, I think it's a legitimate number. Things go up, so maybe, you know, more, but like boring four inch pipes, the way that they're presenting it, 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 yeah, it's pretty tight, but it's not like a mainline job. It's not like when we're talking about doing our water system, it's the mainline and all the services and all that infrastructure where this is just a straight shot, you know, out.
And it's really not that far. It's, you know, from our water plant out to the, the NAP branch.
And I guess, but like what we're landing on is, is we need more information to move forward. I think we have some, some big ones. We know we need to work on that MOU. We know we need to figure out who's fitting the bill until we come up with this decision.
Part, one thing that I feel needs to be addressed at some point is we have more work than our city employees can do right now. So paying for their time to do work for this is taking them away from work that they would be doing otherwise for the city. So the only way to fix that is to hire more people, which we can't afford to do.
I think right now, can't we do, can't we take that, that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars should be funding?
Well, that needs to be figured out whether we could do that or not.
These staff hours right now? These staff hours right now.
Until we produce a plan, we can't, we can't start using that money for any of this.
What Gary's saying is it doesn't really matter because Joseph is already working his quite a lot all the time and to add more, I mean, or to any of our staff members are already kind of working to the max.
Works and.
But initially, that all the testing and all the compliance was going to be on the ERPD. So that's the kind of thing we need to write into the agreement is there will be some contractor or some sort of, you know, it's not our duty to maintain the.
Because already we've spent a lot of employee time. John and Melissa and Joseph have spent time on this project that they would have been spending on other city things.
Right, but I I mean, a conditional use permit.
So and we don't have that time to spend. We need more employee.
Well, it's incumbent upon us to do the business of the city. And if that is a CUP permit and it takes hours and hours and hours, that's a requirement that we've laid out. And so it would be like um, I mean, yes, I I understand your point and and I do, and I, but if it's lays within within the the traditional workload of or or the scope of work that that these people would do, then do you charge them more? I don't know. But when you start talking about beyond that, or, see, I think like this meeting perhaps would um, I would say write your staff hours down and and try to get it reimbursed when we do get that money to come through.
But I'm I I'm not saying that this would stop the project. I'm just saying that this is something that needs to be because our employees are already overworked.
They are.
And we need more employees if we're going to be adding. There's a limit. They're doing business right now and then we're adding all of this to that. I don't see how we can expect them to do.
We're not going to get tax based without being able to hook people up to water. And we're not going to hit water unless we have a bunch of money and it's a big fat puzzle. Maybe this is a piece of it that might help.
I completely understand where you're coming from, Gary, and I do understand that completely. But it would be kind of the same thing as just shutting down our whole planning department saying, we're not gonna, we're not gonna do any planning. You can't develop your land and we just can't do that. Or right away request, just say, we're not gonna, don't bring us any more right away requests. We're not going to look at them. It'd be, we'd be like almost shutting, slowly shutting down. We have to, we're obligated to do these things.
I don't think it's the same because this is um, I mean, it is because we have agreed to the conditional use permit, but it's also not the same because it's our, it's the city's land and it's the city's resources and the city's purview. It's not like somebody's private land. It's like our city streets, it's our wastewater treatment plant, it's our staff, it's all that stuff. It's not like your land and, you know.
Right.
There's been some work here, though, that that
We should decide if it's a benefit to us is what we should do.
I I see, I thought that'd been done ten years ago. I voted against this thing about fifteen times. Every time it came along, I didn't like it, didn't like it, didn't like it. But now, ten years into it and and seeing where we really are and and maybe I would have been more supportive uh in the past. I don't know, but.
I I think I would like more information from their engineer on how much of this water that you can take and how much I'd like to see it, you know, go from January to December, you know, not May through October. I we want a real outfall is what the city wants. That's what our, you know, our citizens would want and expect from us is to have a secondary outfall. And that's what we need, you know, because.
That turns into a benefit, but otherwise it's not.
You're absolutely right because our first outfall failed with a storm. Our second outfall is gonna fail from a storm. There's no doubt about it. It's going to happen someday. And I'm not saying the secondary outfall is going to be the complete answer, but the engineer sitting at the table did have a good point about, you know, being able to pump in one location to work on another and those kinds of things. So there are benefits and there are pros and cons. We have to decide, do the pros outweigh the cons?
Well, and there is a hitch in this sewer wa- treatment, the wastewater treatment, you know, this this saying that uh ERPD is required to pay for and maintain the effluent like this document. Like, it's it's regardless of what they say on what it says or what we were going to provide, that line right there makes it not null and void, but it sure muddles everything up.
Well, I mean, I think everybody uh felt much more comfortable with the idea that they're going to pay for it and own it and be responsible for it and the city was not. I mean, that's kind of the understanding I always had. And so um, this new circumstance, I I don't feel that comfortable with it, I'll just say. And I I think that there's some ways that we should be thinking about it maybe a little bit differently.
It looks like we would definitely need to have an agreement with NAPS as well, for sure.
Well, Mr. Clu says not, so.
Yeah, well, that's why I think we do.
I think that's what Mr. Spiekmann was speaking to um.
As far as the agreements with NAPS.
Well, not really the agreement, the looking at the option of being able to irrigate out there.
You would look at that, but you have to remember that even Gold Beach, they irrigate underneath all their two million gallons a day goes underneath the airport.
Right.
If they can't meet that quality, it still goes to a creek for an overflow.
Right.
If you can't send Class C to the developer's property, you still need an outfall for emergency discharge.
Correct.
So you're always still going to have to take the 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 highest peak days and you're anytime you're not meeting Class C. But the developer is certainly willing to work towards taking all they can. Okay, that that's where they're at.
So basically, if I if my outfall did fail, I'm not really feeling like we have a secondary outfall. We have a spot that we could shut down our existing outfall to do maintenance, but.
Flows would be your outfall. And DQ would.
Again, I'm sorry.
So wherever if it failed, I don't know where your plant, it overflow. Ultimately, the wastewater overflow would flow across land to the ocean. That would, that is your overflow in the event that your outfall floods.
Is that right? Is that?
It it goes somewhere and.
But is that?
I don't, your permit's not going to list it, but it's there and DQ knows it's there. I mean, everyone, when a manhole overflows, it goes downhill.
Yeah.
Well, it goes, I mean, I think we've had circumstances, like one of the things that goes on in our wastewater plant is there's a return to plant that is not functioning properly right now. So that would be the ideal situation. It goes back to the plant. We can treat it again. We have wastewater ponds. There, I mean, there's things we have within our system, but it's not if it's a major failure. Um, that's the, you know, obviously.
What else do we have on item B?
All good points, by the way, from everybody. I mean, it's, this whole thing is like we've started all over again.
We have. The the money changed everything a hundred percent. It it made everything that's written down here from two thousand seventeen not that valid anymore. And it like, I'm stuck on that section five point one of the required to pay, like that that sentence alone. Just, I mean, it's not a deal breaker by any means. It just needs means we need to rework the document.
No, I would like to keep that in there. I mean, personally, that's what I think we need to do is we need to keep that as part of the agreement, which has always been the agreement and figure out there is a lot of, there's going to be a lot of expenses on our side to figure out the feasibility, to figure out how we're going to rework our system. I mean, we are using UV bulbs that have to be ordered from China that are always breaking in our water system. I mean, we we have such we have so many things that are like on the verge of disaster in our wastewater treatment plant right now. I I think realistically, we have to be thinking more about using some of that money to prepare for being able to reliably provide Class C. So I'm just putting that out there. I think that needs to be part of our, something that we talk about.
I agree with you, Anne.
In this, in this situation.
Projects to do to get to the T.
What we could do is come up with a, here's what we need. Here's what we need to to give you that. And and maybe it's another seven hundred fifty thousand. And we know who to take it to. I mean.
And that goes back to that memorandum of understanding, probably one of the facets of that.
Ultimately, as far as is um.
Write it down.
Who's responsible, I think, as long as you have a a real watertight or airtight bond, then it gets handled.
I think it's really interesting that you're bringing up this bond idea because I haven't really heard that. What I've heard is, oh, you just can like write it into an agreement. But then that worries me because when people go away, I mean, here's the situation. We have in our wa- in our water system, we have pipes that are fifty years old or forty years old that are splitting and breaking. And I know the purple line for sewer is thicker and probably will not, has a longer lifespan. But we have inherited these situations. And so, I mean, to be forward thinking, we want to not have our city councilors in fifty years looking at pipes
Right.
that are having problems, you know. So um and if if the golf course goes away and the NAPS say, well, we don't want any part of this, you know.
That's how you do it and.
But, you know, then we'd be, you could have an agreement, but then if nobody's there and you're kind of left to out to hang or hang out to dry, I guess. I'm sorry.
Yeah, because at the end of the day, that permit will be under us. So we're the ones that DEQ has got the black and white to come after on. You know what I mean? As far as the immediate. And that was one question I had. If if this legislator legislative appropriation when it came about, could a private entity even get a DEQ permit? Or, I mean, or like regardless of how it shakes out, does the city need to be the holder of that permit? Or is it feasible that ERP could do this this agreement like it was and pay for it all themselves and it's their permit?
I don't believe they could. It would be under the city's permit because it's sure.
So we just weren't aware in two thousand seventeen that we would be able to get the DEQ permit. And that's where it gets weird because.
I think they're they're willing to take all responsibility. They're finding out they can't, so they're work, work, they need agreements in place to make it still happen.
Oh, so we know that we can't, that the city has to. I mean, it's part of this conversation.
Most likely, it's going to be under the NPDS permit.
And I should just mention that at at one point I was asking Crystal about some of the things going on at the wastewater treatment plant. Um, and she did underscore that, oh, you you guys are going to have to redo, you know, she did underscore that at that point. That's the first time I heard that this would be our responsibility or that we would have to kind of redo ours and be responsible.
It's our signature on the on the report.
Yeah, it's whoever's in charge, whoever has that position.
So there's value too, you know, uh, in that
Yeah.
stuff. And um maybe someday there's actually more than one interested party. We have five of them and maybe it's to grow hay.
But they can't use it for that. They can only use it for golf courses.
It would be irrigation out there.
And that would be a nice way to write that agreement up is just irrigation, nothing to do with golf course or anything.
Or to write it up, write it up for recycled water use so that if it's not, if something happens and there's other ways it might be used.
All the sites, whatever you do, have to be amended in your recycled water use plan.
Think of the amount of water that's like.
You have to put the property and the acreage and the dosage rates, all that information has to go into the recycled water use plan, which is under your NPDS permit. So they did a draft years ago, which said they were going to irrigate X amount of acres. And here's the nitrogen they're applying because DEQ checks all those parameters. Now that it changed until they get final plans and then they would do an amendment to the recycled water use plan to outline that. That's why DEQ won't approve a recycled water use plan until you have final acreage calculations. Because they make us calculate how much nitrogen we're putting on per acre.
Which you put it on cranberry bog and all of a sudden it turns into something that grows the cranberries in the spring. Right. Or, I mean, it doesn't have to be a golf course. That's just.
They're gonna, they're gonna ask us as engineers to design it for Class C if there was a consensus that the city was going to go in that direction.
I just think maybe that for for options in the future, because that was some part of the discussion in the past was was um the trend, the trend in golfing, those those who participate, it appeared to be a downward trend. And that was an argument that was made like this is not going to make it, this and that, but you know, we're not very far from a lot of cranberry bogs that might use that water and that would um not need to take clean water, which is, that's the goal. That's that's the feature's gold, right? We know that, that that freshwater is gold.
I have to check on that. I don't think you can use Class C for foods and produce that you're going to eat.
It would, uh, maybe, yeah.
Seen it used on almond farms, but that's a little.
Do people eat almonds?
Well, there's some primitive ones in settlement so they can use it, but they never have planted the almonds, so.
You know, I guess maybe that's.
Well, they would just be floating the berries when um, and it was just, just a crazy, I'm not, I'm not even a farmer. I don't know nothing about it. I'm just saying. I know too much nitrogen will um, you can't grow weed with too much.
So there is an appi- active application in front of the DEQ right now?
No, no, they, we sent the the city, we gave a copy of the draft recycled water use plan in two thousand sixteen to the city. And I don't know if, you know, DQ looks at it, but they aren't going to give a comment.
No, I'm just going off the findings that say the applicant has an active application before the DEQ. Okay.
I think we also asked.
But how could that be if you can't get the permit without us to to be the people that hold the permit? Like, why wouldn't they have told you that right off the bat?
We have to have an application to apply for it.
Okay.
Have to apply to apply. But we, you guys, so you guys have to apply for yours, but we have to apply for ours. Kind of like.
Well, yeah, they'll have to apply to irrigate the property. They'll have to operate under the city's recycled water use plan.
Oh, so that's another angle. We're not required for any of the irrigation after the pond?
They would take care of that.
Well, it's just a valid question because if we're doing the permit, then it's probably like you just said, the whole acreage and everything has to be considered. So like, it's like, I'm not an engineer. I need to like ask these questions.
Well, yeah, I can answer that. So they, once it hits the pond, they, they're a hundred percent. They need to, they're going to pump it from there, whether they pump it underground.
Do we still own it then?
No, that's what I was asking. So that's the DEQ permit that ERP D is working on is after the pond.
Yeah, I believe so.
That's the application.
But I wouldn't say we own it when it's going through the county, you know, after it leaves. I mean, I guess it is ours after it leaves us until it goes to where it's going. I guess that's the deal. We're responsible for it.
That's the question.
Do we need to get a right away from the county to do this? I guess it's already kind of pre.
There'll be right away permits filed for, yes.
Right. No, but but I mean, if it's our pipeline, it needs to be our right away permits, which we haven't applied for. It was the angle that I was.
I I just really feel uncomfortable with this idea that somehow we're going to end up owning this still. I I would like.
I think the only part you have to own is the part you'd spend funds on. So.
Right.
And I don't want to tell you to spend the seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, but if my discussions with business organ was that that funds had to be spent on city owned property, for example, which side of the property line you put the pump station on dictates who, you know, owns it, maintains it to some degree. So are the agreements? So if you wanted to focus just on your wastewater property, you could spend seven hundred fifty thousand dollars there, then you could have the agreement say that the developers then responsible from that point to their pond. It doesn't necessarily state it has to be all.
Okay, that's right there what I what I'm curious about. Okay, so if we're needing to, so if we, so if we spend the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to make sure that our wastewater treatment plant, the bulbs, the return to plant, the all those things, if we spent that for the positive of our wastewater treatment plant and we did it in there with the goal of being able to provide wastewater, classy wastewater to them, we could spend it in our plant to get it exactly what we needed and then they would be liable for outside of our.
They expressed to me they were willing to put the pump station in the pipeline. And so if you just gave them a T and a pipe to the property line, they would pick it up and design it.
And then we wouldn't be liable for, if we only spent it in our wastewater treatment plant, then we would not be liable for the pumps and the pipes and everything else that happens outside of our city property.
That's my understanding.
From the T, which is just sticks out of the side of the house, right?
Run the T to their property and say, build a pump house and go.
That would make me feel much better. I got a.
That's that that makes me feel better. Originally, I think.
Now we're getting back to where.
Positives. Positives.
Well, we're getting back to where we originally started.
Yes.
And I think that's where everybody's had a little bit of heartache is that we were gonna own this pipeline all the way out to the development. And it looks like we're gonna own it to the T where we always agreed to own it.
Right. Because we weren't under that impression. We were under the impression that, like, from the T all the way out to the pond had to be u- under us to make that DEQ permitting work. But if we can just go to the edge of their property and, like, why couldn't we go to the edge of the property, just the lateral, and then they do the pump station and carry out? I mean, that's legitimate.
I mean, unless we come across a field of flood down the road, I have no objections. I don't think that.
Because that's what you've talked about, right? Like, that, that is the idea that even if we, so the positive for this, if we were able to use that money for the people of Port Orford in the wastewater treatment plant, for the people of Port Orford and use that money there, in order to prepare and to prepare for, for water recycling, which is what the bill says for water recycling in Port Orford, we could do that. And then the developers would be liable and completely solely responsible for everything that happened outside of, off of our property from there.
Off of their. Well, what about from the plant to their property?
It was city limits, maybe, or.
Oh, it's just like 50 feet of pipe.
Oh, oh, to that pump.
From their property, little property.
Waste treatment plant to.
So the property that they bought. By Wyoming is about 50 feet.
Years ago, they purchased the property right there for this reason. And, and that is what the councils agreed to at the time was to get it to the pump house and then they take it over from there.
Which was the original agreement and what was there?
And it's not going all the, all the way across town.
Yeah, there's. Well, it's gonna go across town, but that's not our, that's not, they're going to.
Then it's like a franchise agreement. Then it's like, you know, Beacon Broadband or, you know, Lippley, who has their franchise in utility infrastructure in our city.
And then they would also assume liability for their construction.
Be liable for.
Liability for the pipe and the, all the heartaches that we're all concerned about. And, you know, we don't want to hang our citizens for.
But you're saying that, just to clarify, you're saying though, that we would still be responsible for that effluent until it hit the pond out there then in that scenario?
As far as making sure that they manage it and apply it in accordance with the recycled water use plan.
So they would be liable for the pumps and the pipes, but we would still probably be liable for the effluent itself to make sure that it got there and was fine. And then at that point, once it dropped into their holding pond, then they would be liable for it because we've delivered it to their spot.
You could have an agreement where they're liable for them, any spills or breaks and things like that. That's an agreement type.
Okay.
Separation there.
I, I think that'd be, you know, things that attorneys would work out. So, I mean, because.
It'd be better than.
I'll be the first to admit, I'm not an attorney.
But I think what we're talking about are the bones that are really important, you know. And so that's, you know, and, and ownership and liability, those are like, that's like the key, some of the key things here moving forward. And, you know, how do we make sure we're not getting ourselves liable?
Their support was directly, as it resulted from those key bones that you're talking.
And, and, and under that, like, even if we did just do a pump house and our own upgrades, it's still spending money and that doesn't align with when we adjusted our wastewater treatment plan. So regardless of what we do, that has to be fixed. You know what I mean? If that money wants to be accessed, how do we get around that? Because Lori said that it kind of.
You know, if you need.
Muddies up this document.
Well, you need to do a study on that. I mean, Tommy said he could use the money for pretty much anything.
No, I'm talking about the agreement that says that ERPD is required to pay for and maintain the effluent piping and infrastructure to this property. And that wasn't, where did I see the, the wordage on the money when it was? Yeah. Yeah, that the ERP is required to pay for and maintain the effluent piping and infrastructure to its property.
They're willing to do that.
What's that?
They've expressed they're willing to do that.
Right, I know. But because of the nature of it now with the legislative appropriation, technically that's the city spending the money. You can call it a pass through. You can say it however it is.
No, but we just said, we just said that we can spend the money possibly, we have to verify this. And we've been trying to get verification on this, that we could spend the money to prepare water for.
I hear what you're saying, but if we make an agreement with them prior to that, then we are spending money towards that end. And I, like, this is probably just me, my semantics, you know, but, but even if, it's, it's still an appropriation that's spent. And I could totally be wrong, but the way that reads is says the city is not gonna spend a dime. So regardless of where we got those dimes from, it's still our dime. And how much does that?
Well, but if we spent it just to the T, we're saying, I guess this is.
Spending money. A penny is a penny. And it's for that, those ends. But if we're just making it available in general, then that's different. If we're just making the building, if we're just building our plant up to make recycling water available for anyone, then that's a conversation that I think that the commission can feel comfortable.
And in my head, it needs to be something that for the people of Port Orford to put more positives, put more positives in the column, that we need a return to plant. We have a situation in our, in our wastewater treatment plant that we could solve with that money. We have to, you know, we need to cover our, our bulbs and our UV system so that it's more protected and we need to upgrade that system, which would be moving us forward to being able to recycle wastewater for whatever use that it was. But it's ultimately a positive, which then puts a spin on, that ultimately puts it as a positive for our citizenry.
Right.
Which is the goal of our job. And like that, that return to, return to plant fix, for example, that helps us with our, with our water system. Because when we've gotten in a bind and we didn't, weren't able to use the return to plant, we've had to use treated water in our sewer treatment plant. So that's taking water that, you know, that we really need elsewhere. So, I mean, there's, there's, that's a, there's some specific things that could be positive.
Just, can our attorney look at that document, that agreement and?
Yeah, because she mentioned that it might.
Guess who needs to read that thing? And then it, you know, words or, or she can give us her opinion of it and we can move forward.
Can we like do the new roof and, you know?
On the sewer plant?
It has to be specifically for wastewater recycling. So things that, that would make sense to get us to a point to be able to recycle wastewater, which again, I think is a positive thing. It's been looked at as positive. It, freshwater is gold. I.
So, so, yeah.
Uh, just one quick thing. It's 728.
We can't vote.
We can't make a motion to extend the meeting, so.
Oh, yeah.
You're here, you're here. If you're not, you're not.
I want to say one other thing, though.
Yeah, go, go, go.
Just following up on what Melissa just said is that, uh-oh, it's 7:30 and I like, may have forgot what I was gonna say already. Damn it, what was I gonna say? Oh, it's something along the lines of when we're, when we are spending money on our wastewater treatment plant to benefit our citizens. Well, I don't, I don't remember what I was gonna say. I've literally lost my.
That's what we do.
I think that's the goal. It was somewhere along those lines of saying that's, that's, I think, a, a good place to, to know we're kind of landing.
And I think we need to look at this project as a water recycling project and stop looking at it on who's receiving it. It's, and ask ourselves that question. Is this water recycling project a good thing for the city of Port Orford? And we're, we're, I think we've taken a spin back to yesteryear to what every council that I've sat on in the last 15 years, all the councillors that agreed to this, agreed to what we just spoke about in the last 15 minutes.
And Tim, what you just said reminded me what I was gonna say, which is that, which builds exactly on what you're gonna, we're saying, which is that if we are focused on that, then we are not gonna get out over our skis and overextending. And if the golf course doesn't work out, or if different things happen in the future or whatever, we will have done something that's positive for our city and creates opportunity for different opportunities.
That pipe guy, pipeline could do a U-turn from wherever it is and end up south of town.
Well, and I was the deciding vote in 2017 and my brain sat on a secondary outfall regardless of whatever. When you have a major system, why wouldn't you want to consider the secondary option when you have someone coming and saying, we will build this for you. We just want your.
That's most of the council's thoughts.
Where I was on it, because it was so early in the game, you know, and you assumed there's gonna be a lot more conversation and a lot more agreements. And this happened and that happened and, and we're here where we are.
The fear has always been the urban growth boundary and what might occur within it, because we all know that the money's in the links. It's not in the golf course. It's in the housing around the golf course. And will we be roped into that, supplying those services? That's the gorilla in the room as far as I'm concerned.
But I think our attorney is going to address that and look into it because we, we don't want to be responsible for those things because we cannot do it. We can't physically do it.
They're not. You have to look at the urban growth boundary language i- in the law.
And, and that's what I think she'll do. And she'll give us some good thoughts to think about because we are not prepared to send water and sewer anywhere outside the city limits.
We've got to take care of our, our infill and, you know, have opportunities to make our own community more vital by encouraging development in, in the city. Well, that's.
And our master plan calls for development on the south side of town. So, I mean, it's, it's kind of a tough, tough place we are.
Counselor Tidy, do you have anything to add?
Nope. I, I've been sitting. I'm, I'm good. Thank you. Anyone else?
Meeting adjourned. That wasn't even that bad.
He always surprises me when he does that. I see it in his hand and then.
It is 7:30 and 122nd. No, it's not. It's still 7:30.